Hello everyone, it's good to see a few extra faces for this meeting. It makes me feel a little bit better, like I hope things are improving, I hope. So if everyone will please stand for the place of allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Remain for a moment of silence. This meeting will now come to order. Our first item is approval of agenda. Do I hear a motion?
A motion that we approve, the agenda submitted.
Do I have a second? Second.
I'd like to move to amend the agenda. And add discussion of governor's request of changing school names at the.
I'll say.
We can put under action items. That'd be adding discussion about governor's request of changing school names.
I don't think we're going to worry about that now, still, but we can discuss.
Do it.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Okay, recognition? Dr. Austin, you go.
No ma'am, we don't have any.
Okay. Public comment, and your public comment, remember, you cannot mention anyone's names, and you have a time limit of five minutes. Anyone want to speak? Okay, board comments? I went to Lyman Hope Governor's School June 16th, and there was only four of us there, but two or three were able to participate by way of radio. So, of course, they're kind of a virtual type learning situation, so they're doing good, everything's on course, and I would like to ask that our guidance counselors, please encourage your really intelligent, self-motivated children to think about this.
Yeah, I know we're going to get into this later, but I want to comment about reopening the schools. What a fun time it is to be a school board member, no pressure, you know, what could go wrong? No matter which decision you make, you're going to get blamed when something goes wrong. And that's just the reality of it. But I've thought a lot about this, I've read about what other school systems are doing, what school districts in other states, especially like some of the low counties in other states that border on Lee County in Virginia. I've read CDC materials and different things, really tried to educate myself on it, but I still at the end come to, I don't know what the right decision is. We could have a reopening and just maybe have a few cases or no cases, and we'll look like geniuses. We could reopen, and it could go just wildfire, and we look like idiots. But there is no, nobody knows for certain how to go about this. We're going to do the best we can. I know it's going to be a proposal put forward, it's not a bad proposal at all. Just me personally, I would rather have the high schoolers go back four days a week, like we're doing with K through 7. I think we've kind of done a disservice to ourselves in this country by distancing ourselves so much that we're not out there just living our lives and, you know, kind of maybe building up an immunity to this thing. So hopefully, we'll make the right decision, hopefully people will be safe in Lee County and Lee County public schools. I don't know, maybe, I would like to see false fours, it's probably not going to happen, but I would certainly be for that also. I do think the administration's put a lot of time and effort into coming up with a plan. It may not be the plan that I'm enamored with, it's not a bad plan at all, I'll say that. So there would be community for all the work they've done. I'll just leave it at that.
I'm with Mr. Hines with what he's talking about there, and, you know, everybody's got an opinion of what we need to do, what we need to do, what we need to do, and who knows who has the right opinion of what we need to do. But most folks that I talk to, they're telling me they'd just like to go back to school, go back to school and just use God, give us good sense, you know, don't be in everybody's face, you know, and you know how kids are, kids are going to be running up to each other and hugging each other and stuff, that's, that's kids, you know. So like I said, I don't know what the, like Mr. Hines, I don't know what the right solution is, but most folks that I talk with, the teachers and the parks and stuff, they just like to go back to school and try to get back to something regular, something back to normal, if they sustain, to be normal. So, and I commend Mr. Austin, his staff, they work hard, they really truly have, they work hard trying to put some stuff together, they've got some different things to look at and stuff, and it has to be a big burden, one I didn't have, they're using me on one of them deals. But just, y'all just remember, it's a big decision, it really truly is, you know, like Rob said, it's the way it goes, you know, it's the heck if you do it, heck if you don't. Just remember that if you don't care, especially in your prayers, I ask that God give us godly wisdom and godly guidance, that we will make the right decisions for Lee County schools.
I agree with everything that's just said, we do want to make mention of the Cook lady. Gary.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, Mrs. Cook was also, she was a nurse at St. Charles School, and she passed away the other day, and we just like to recognize her and her family, so y'all remember her and that family in your prayers, if you don't care.
Also, I add, I do want to thank the administration, Dr. Austin, I talk to him every now and then, sometimes in a text, and I'm like, where we at, what we doing? And he said, it's, we're working on it, it changes daily, and everybody is weighing in differently, obviously. It's a big political stage, this thing is, in my opinion, it has been since the get-go, it still will be, it sounds like it, but. There, like it's already been said, there is no good, right, perfect answer. My kids want to go back to school, every kid I talk to, high school to the second grade, I want to go back to school, like, here we go, here we go. Most teachers that I talk to, well, all the ones that I've asked, are they worried? Absolutely, we all are, but they want, they want to see their kids, they want to see their students, they want to get back to work, and we got to figure out how, that's the tough part. But I do thank everybody for the plan, I know it's been shared with other counties, we've worked with other counties, other superintendents, with different things, we got to do what's best for Lee County, in my opinion, but. Me too, sports-wise, I'll touch on that just a little bit, if we can go to school with the place for us, that's my opinion, and there's no reason why we couldn't. That's a big kicker for a lot of people, I know, and not everybody, but the transportation piece of this will be the worst, from what I understand, but like I said, it changes daily, it could change between now and next time we're in meeting, that's how quick it changes. So, as already been said, God is still in control, in my opinion, it's not up to us if people get sick or die, it's up to the good Lord above, and I'm ready to move, one way or the other.
Well, I have a little bit of different take on it, because I have a real concern for the students and staff, and I don't feel like going back like nothing's happened five days a week is a good thing. I feel like that our medical people and our scientists should be the one guiding us, and I appreciate the work that Dr. Austin has done about making some kind of altered schedule. You know, I understand people are trying to make a political thing of it, but when you go back in history to pandemics, then you see it's not going to go away in six, seven months. And we can't live our life in fear, but we've got to be careful. So, no matter what happens, like I say, we're going to get criticized, but I would rather be a little bit on the safer side, and as far as sports, probably not anybody loves sports any better than I do. That was my life growing up, I still enjoy them, but again, and the thing of it is, is some of these people have had terrible cases, they have to live with this, what's happened to them a lifetime, and I just don't feel like it's political, I just, and I wish it wasn't even brought into play, but that's all I have to say, thank you.
I'd like to commend Dr. Austin with the plan. Safety is the key issue here, the safety of our children, the safety of our teachers. And as a former educator, I have a low immune system, and I was sick a lot as a teacher. And people with low immune systems, you're going to catch everything coming and going. When there's a virus, strep, or anything, it's something, it's very serious, especially with this COVID. My doctors have already told me that if I get this, I will not live, and I'm concerned about the safety of our children, the safety of our teachers, we don't know their immune systems, we have no idea what health issues they have, and I think we're taking a risk. If we go five days a week, we just need to start out with the plan that Dr. Austin has made, and be safe about it, so that everyone will stay healthy. Thank you.
Any other comments, the board?
Aye.
Okay, under the consent agenda, if you will look at those.
Do we put a delegate out for delegate, and you, I click on check, but you have one for that?
Uh, no, we need a delegate for the Virginia School Board Association with anybody, it's going to be virtual, is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
You're just going to watch it by way of computer, but we need a delegate?
We need it.
It's.
November, the dates down, November 18th through 20th. It's tips in Weemsburg, I think it's still going to be in Weemsburg, but they're involved virtually also.
I wouldn't mind doing it, but I don't have internet in mine, where I live, it's not offered other than Tuesday, anything quick enough to do virtual, anything.
If you consent, you want to authorize your chair, does he make those after you all check calendars and stuff, you all can do that, yes.
Gary, are you interested?
Well, I don't. I figure y'all know that. I worry him asking here. You definitely don't want me.
But you're learning, you're doing a great job. Virginia School Board Association, as board members, we are a member of this organization, and they have an annual convention, and that's like you learn things that are going on, and they're going to have it virtual, so you could watch it from a computer, and it's November the 18th through the 20th.
I mean, I'll figure, I mean, I'll figure it's part of that.
Rob, did you check your calendar?
Yeah, I mean, I can do it if somebody else wants to.
Well, we'll just decide later who won't, ninth, did you?
November 18th.
It's been 14.
Should we with delegate, I would be all right.
All right, we got it. Gary Williams is going to be delegate, and Rob Hines is going to be alternate. Thank you very much. All right, consent agenda, if you look through these. Is it up there?
He's looking through.
Okay. Do you need me to go over these individually? Don't need to?
Not required.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Second?
Say it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So the consent agenda passed, unanimous. Okay, reports of the board. That's probably where I should have talked about the governor's school, but I've already done that.
Don't, don't really have a report, but I would like to make mention of the outbuildings or the mobile units, they put in them, and Elydale, I did get a chance to look at Elydale, it looked really good on the outside, big, nice decks, all the way to them, just thankful for the maintenance department and everything that's done there.
Anyone else? Okay, and Dr. Austin returns, he can give us the reports of the division superintendent.
I'll, I'm behind you, I'm walking in, Mr. Rishis, I noticed something wasn't up there. Start of the school year as proposed, it's still August 6th, now, of course, that's something that's still up for discussion, and we will be voting on next Wednesday. The reason that we've requested special call meeting, and everybody's got that on their calendar, I think, for 2 o'clock next Wednesday, is we have to have our education plan to the Department of Education, 15 business days before we start school, and it's hard to believe, but four weeks from today, we will have finished our first day of school, whatever that looks like, if we start August 6th. So, next Thursday, we'll be three weeks out, so that's 15 business days, so that's why we requested that, and then also with support from both television and from newspaper, this should be out publicly by Wednesday next week, we'll have a week for this to set and be discussed publicly. You all can give feedback, we'll give feedback, and we'll tweak and change this as you all see fit. So, excited about the start of the school year. Operations update, I'm not going to read that to you, and then an update to superintendent's rig related to regulation related to school activity funds. This is in response to the request from Mr. Hines and Mr. Williams last week that we modify our purchasing procedures to allow for a local preference, and so we've added that to the policy. It does not require board action, that's why I'm doing is a superintendent's update, that's something that procedurally we handle, and we'll make sure bookkeepers and principals are aware of, so we have addressed that concern, and you, I think you've seen it, if you have any questions, let me know, but have you all seen it, any feedback? Mr. Sturgill, appreciate your help with that, he of course helps us with our local school board policies and superintendent's regulations, board regulations and superintendents, so that way we're legally in compliance, but of course the other policies come from Virginia School Board Association. And then lastly is, you've got a copy of the request of the board of supervisors, one of the things that we are doing is we have cares money, which is the funding that came from the federal government. As you're aware, the school board has approximately $1.3 million, and we have a plan for that, but the county has $2.3 million. In a conversation with Mr. Poe, they have until December to spend theirs, I think we have until next September, October to spend ours, Ms. Wills, I don't think. So, that being said, what we're going to do is we will have as an action item next Wednesday, if you all are okay with it, is part of this, if not all of this, request to the board of supervisors, because if they're looking for a way to spend money, this will address some of our back-to-school plan, which of course is part and parcel of the whole thing. This is providing a device, whether it's a Chromebook or a tablet, to something to every child 3K12. Right now, we have 8 through 12, and you can see all the different things there that are going to tie into remote learning, and how our teachers will be able to teach from a distance virtually, which I'm excited about, and I'll speak about that some, that, you know, this is a glass half-full situation for me, in that our teachers are going to be able to reach students differently than they have, not just in person, but move us into the 21st century on education. So, showing this as a superintendent's update, not an action item, but if you have any questions, be glad to address that, but more than likely this will be coming to you, I've spoken to Mr. Williams and Mr. Hines as your finance committee, and both of them seem to be in support of making this request to the board of supervisors, and if they can fund any of it, then that just saves us money that we can put towards salaries, if there's a reduction in state revenue, which we anticipate.
So, going back to reopening schools, since you're on the floor now?
I've got that as an action item later, if you want to, what you do then, or if you want to.
I can wait.
Okay.
Just give me top clinical questions that you ask.
Did you have any more feedback on the cares, any questions, concerns? Okay.
I didn't have questions or concerns, but I had a teacher to ask, she uses YouTube in her classroom quite a bit, and she's wondering if she's been cut out of access to, and is that, what kind of issue, why's that, and this is a very good teacher.
We have, not that I'm aware of, but we haven't turned it off, if she's got an issue, have her touch base with, I would start with, take contact in the building, and then from there, we would check with, if you give me a name, we can check on it, see what's going on.
Okay.
We haven't turned anything off that I'm aware of.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
No unfinished business. Number 10, action, discussion item. Action, if any, award a contract for a capital construction loan of $300,000 to be repaid over four years for the repairs and replacement of the roof of Dryden Elementary, consistent with the approval granted by the Lee County Board of Supervisors to Farmers and Miners Bank. We need to have a motion on that.
Yes, ma'am, I'll make a motion. I'll say it.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Both of you, yes. And first review of educational plan for 2021 school year.
I'm sorry, I know we've gone past it, but I do want to make mention of this bid, three banks in Lee County, it was, was offered a bid different, if you want to touch on that just a little bit, how we done that, we're just not picking a bank and giving them a loan.
Correct. It was bid out to, not just in Lee County, it was bid out to the Richmond website through the Department of General Services, and so we had an organization out of Richmond requesting information, so, three Lee County banks submitted proposals, that's what we considered, and that's why we made that recommendation, so I appreciate the support, because getting a roof on Dryden is a priority on your capital improvement plan, as well as administration's day-to-day operations, so thank you.
Thank you.
I'll go on to be, or I know you all amended the agenda, does that go to?
We can go to the last.
Does that go deep?
Okay.
Freddie, if you pull up a PowerPoint, that'd be great.
I say one thing, that's a far as my opinion. They were the lowest bidder of all three banks.
Yes, sir.
Pretty much lower than the, than the other two.
Right, 2.2%.
It's a real deal. I didn't know that myself.
Okay, so, I got a PowerPoint for you, and we're members, I know you got your back to this, so I don't know if you all want to move over to the side to be able to see this, or if you want to turn around, we tried to reserve the first row on the right side and left side, so if you all want to sit there and still social distance, you're more than welcome. It's 40-some slides with a lot of stuff, I know you all, we've got a preview version of it, but run you through results from our Internet Access Survey, one of the things that I hear frequently is, I don't participate in the survey, because it's not going to matter what I say, administration or school board, anyone will listen to. I want to show you, administration, we listen to survey results, so if you don't participate in a survey, that's on you, we listen to survey results. Now, sometimes you get outvoted, and that's just the way it goes, you know, just because you give your opinion and what you say, we don't listen to you, you know, if you weren't part of the majority, then we listened, but it was, you know, the majority went the other direction. So, we'll run you through Internet Access results. This is Internet Access, we ask our staff the questions, you'll see count of, and then you say question. So, how do you have access to the Internet at home? So you see 65% of our staff have access to the Internet at home through broadband, again, this is available online, and it's kind of fuzzy up there, but I apologize for that, but the big thing is 3.5% of our staff do not have access to the Internet at home. That's significant, because if we're going to have teachers who are going to remote teach, that complicates things, so we're going to have to figure out with county cooperation, how we can get Internet to that individual to be able to serve our children and protect their own health. So, that being said, next is how strong is a cell phone connection at your house? So we talked about cell phone, and you can see very strong, moderate, and I'm not going to read that to you, but I was impressed, about 75% of the respondents in this said that they have a strong or very moderately strong cell phone signal, so three quarters of, I think it's about 200 responses, so that's not reflective of our entire staff, but it was a pretty good response for a survey during the summer. Do you have a limited amount of data? I feel like that was important to ask, because if we're streaming, of course, you will burn through that very quickly. And then, this was a box where we had about 15 different options of what kind of device you have, so you can see if somebody selected two, it dropped it in a different bracket, so this pie chart's all over the place, but you can see down in the bottom left corner here, the most common thing appears to be a tablet, Chromebook, or a laptop PC, Chromebook, and probably a cell phone. So you can see what the most common things are in Lee County, as well as up here, tablet, PC, Toma, those are the things that were in the teams, Chromebook, smartphone, so you just get an idea of where our staff is. And the big thing, none, 1.3% have no access or don't have a device, find that kind of surprising, but you know, we still have some people that love flip phones, I've got several people that love them some flip phone. So, students and families, this is the main piece of it, so we polled students and families to find out what was their access, and as you can see here, 50% have broadband access, and about 12% do not have access. Now, from the data that we received, we feel like we had about an 83% response rate for our students. So if you take 83% responded, maybe 17% don't have access, so that's why they didn't respond, and plus the 11, 70/30, I'm kind of surprised by that in the county, but we're going to work harder to figure out who has Internet access and who doesn't, if you as a board decide that you want to do remote learning. So, how strong is the cell phone connection for our students and families? Still almost 70% there saying that they have a strong to moderate cell phone signal, fairly impressive. Do they have a data limit? And then the same thing, we ask staff, we ask students and families, and you'll see here, 7% say they don't have access to anything. And again, you can see pie charts all over the place, I was kind of intrigued by smartphone number being one of the highest ones for our families and students. Not surprised, but you know. And then, this was a question, okay, if you don't have access to that, would you be willing to drive to school and pick up schoolwork supplies, etc.? Yes? 88%. I'm highly impressed with that, that shows commitment by our families to our students' learning and partnerships that we've developed over years. And then, of course, when you have those, would you prefer to pick up, drop off, or would you like for them to be delivered? 70/30, so, similar percentages on several fronts. Community and staff results for reopening. Now, this question, if the governor's order were not a factor, take everything off the table, just the current climate, what you see in the media, everything else, how would you want to start school? We're 50, well, 60/40, 59/49, 59/41, on, want to start with a regular school day. If the governor's order wasn't in play, just based on current climate, 60/40 almost, our community would rather, 40% would rather do some kind of hybrid school day, now that includes remote learning or other variations. So with a regular school day, so for those that said they wanted a regular school day, would you rather go seven hours like we've been doing for ever, or do you want to go a shortened day? Would you rather go five hours, four hours, five and a half, we threw out several different examples, and 52% say that they would prefer a shorter day. Now, but keep in mind, that was of the ones that said they wanted a regular school day. So then here, this was to everybody, since you prefer a shorter day, what kind would they prefer? So, Monday through Thursday was the most common, that they would prefer Monday through Thursday, we threw out Tuesday through Friday, we threw out Monday through Thursday, somebody chose Monday through Thursday and Tuesday through Friday, that was their, they ranked them instead of just selecting a shorter day only, and you can see the different responses there. More detail coming in that once we get to the parents' side of it. Some said they wanted a shorter week, we offered a shorter week, week on, week off, morning, afternoon, that one group of students would come in the morning, another group in the afternoon, every day, and you can see 12% of response on that, week on, week off was 20%, and a shorter week was 61%. Remote learning only was 2% on this one, which I found interesting, and it matched on most of the regular school day. So, we threw this out, if masks were recommended by health professionals, would you support it? Yes, no, or maybe? So, 43% of our community and staff said yes, we'd support it, almost 30% said nope, not going to do it, and 25% said maybe, you know, and I don't know what maybe meant, but we threw it out there just to give them a third option. And then, had they, what's their involvement? You can see most were community members, that's a small number, 67/33, so most of the responses came from community members. And then, the count of the schools that they're involved in, you can see the biggest percentage are Lehigh only, but again, if they selected multiple schools, you can see that it piled up, so that's why that pie's all over the place, because we gave them a drop-down menu of about 13 options that they can pick. So students and families, then we drilled it down, we did one through Power School, that you literally had to have a login and a registered account, so that we know that you're a parent or you're a student, so we, so that it's not somebody sitting there making up email addresses, so that they could skew the results. So community staff is good feedback, but we tied it to an actual login, so that we know that these results are really reflective of our families. Regular school day, 54/46, same questions, if the governor's order didn't matter, if it wasn't in place, if it wasn't guidance, recommendations, whatever they want to say, but if that wasn't in place, are you comfortable sending your child right now today, this was two weeks ago? 54/46, 46% wanted a hybrid day. So, as a parent, how do they want to help us address their children's education? 51 regulars. Fifty-one regular school day, 29 hybrid. 20% said remote only. I'm not sending my child to school at all. Now, I as a parent will, but I'm just saying that's what these parents were saying. So with a regular school day, those that chose regular school day, would they like to go seven hours? Again, looking at that percentage that was back there that said regular school day, did they want a regular whole day, or did they want to go shorter day? Most everybody in that percentage, going back to this previous slide, in that 51%, most people that want a regular day want a regular full seven-hour day. Here are the different options that we had. Now, TH is Thursday, TE is Tuesday, so we gave Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, Wednesday, remote learning. So Monday, Tuesday, one group, Thursday, Friday, another group, and Wednesday is a cleaning, and then, of course, Saturday and Sunday. Two-tenths, 40% remote learning, regular school, AM, PM, I mentioned every other week. Keep in mind, this is our parents and students. There's 59 students in this county, just so you know, and I'll show you that in a minute. Other, we had some that just threw in the original comments. And then Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday remote, 27%. Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday was, and Friday remote was almost a third. So you can see, those are terrible polling numbers if you're polling, because 30 people is going to be unhappy. That's what we're talking about, because there's no decision we're going to make, or that administrations will recommend, that's going to make everybody happy. The thing that we've got to do is within the parameters of all the different guidance that we've gotten, from the Virginia Department of Labor, to the Department of Education, to the Health Department, to CDC, to WHO, to, you know, I keep going. All these different, American Association of Pediatrics, we've got all this different guidance, and 5,000,000 questions we're supposed to ask. It comes down to what's best for Lee County. So that's what we're trying to do. And understand, when we poll, the reason we created this plan is based on that slide right there. That's where we came up with this. This wasn't, hospital only does what he wants to do. No, I've got data to back it up. I mean, I can show you the Excel sheet that's gazillion, you know, entries. Not gazillion, it's 1,500 at this point, but it was 900 when we put this PowerPoint together. So, you know, we listen, and then we communicate that to the school board. This school board listens. If you as a parent call them, they will listen, and they will act based on that. So if you want your opinion heard, share your opinion. Okay, so results of, the big thing, you heard Mr. Kidwell alluded to this earlier, transportation is going to be one of the biggest challenges. Because when guidance first came out, they said six feet on a bus, there has to be social distance, and you have to wear a mask because it's an enclosed space, and you have to have windows down, and the bus driver has to do a temperature check. And once else about had a stroke, you know, we're going back to the department, the Health Department, Department of Education, and the Health Department saying, absolutely not, this is not going to work. Well, thank a lot of things, but the Association of American Pediatrics came out last week and said three feet social distance if you're just talking. If you get closer than three feet, then it's a problem. And that was consistent with CDC, and so everything lined up. So now we can put about half capacity on a bus, as opposed to two weeks ago, it was about a quarter capacity. So with three feet social distance, we now have latitude that if you're in the same household, you can sit in the same seat. We were told no initially on that, and I'm like, they're living in the same house, oh, anyhow. So we worked through that, so we think we can give about half capacity on buses now. So that's a great thing. So, but you can see, ride the bus daily is only 27% of our respondents. Forty-seven percent are now saying they're going to provide their own transportation. So that being said, from perspective, we transport about 2,240 students out of 3,200 a day in March. If we drop down to a third, that's going to be about 900 students a day instead of 2,400. So our buses will not be at capacity, we'll be able to shorten bus routes, we'll still be able to be safe. But needless to say, the car rider lines are going to be fun at the school. You got to get in and get out, because we're going to screen them when they come in, sort of similar to what we did here, just something simple. And the big thing is we're asking parents and staff, if you don't feel good, if you're running a fever, if you've been somewhere that's a hotspot, stay home! Don't subject us to it. We're going to excuse your absence, and you can do your work at home. We will work with you, whether we bring you a piece of paper, mail it to you, or you do it on a Chromebook. We will work with you. Please don't subject our community to more of a public health crisis. We got enough. If you think you're sick, you don't feel well, you, you know, and you go out weed eat, you're coughing and stuff, and, you know, it lasts two or three days, stay home, stay home, stay home. So that, I mean, we need parents to help with that. You know, if your child's running a fever, keep them home. Because, you know, we'll have them in an isolation room at school waiting on you if you don't, because we're not going to subject our school staff, students, and families to that possibility. So provider on transportation is going to go up. Back, we asked this question to parents. Would you support wearing masks? Fifty-two, yes, 22, maybe 25. So, you know, we're not going to pick that battle. It's kind of like the Department of Health and the governor has said at this point, it's a recommendation, and it's a petition for you and others. If you don't want to do it, it's not illegal at this point. I'm not going to say it won't come out of the General Assembly, but you know, at this point, it's a recommendation.
What was the recommendation for staff and teacher?
Staff and teachers, if you are within six feet of a student, you need to wear a mask. So that's guidance, that's what we've got at this point.
Is it a recommendation? Is it, I said do this?
If we put, if you approve it and it's in print.
I'm asking from the governor. The guidelines that he gives us in 136 pages, does it say teachers pass to wear a mask?
Yes, sir, and that's based on CDC guidance, too.
That's the question I was asking.
Center for Disease Control.
What does this, what does his guideline say about students?
If they're under 10, you don't have to wear a mask, but it's recommended. And then I think they just modified it recently, as recently as Tuesday, to if you're within three feet, you should wear a mask.
You should, or you have to?
Should, everything should at this point.
Even with the teacher?
Teachers, if you all say that you're within six feet of students, you got to wear a mask, it becomes a thou chef, and that's what we've got in the policy to protect us.
Right.
Because understand, the alignment of this is there's recommendation guidance from all the health professions. And then there's the legal side of it, which Mr. Sturgis helps us with. And then there's the risk management side of it. Because somebody is going to get sued on this just to test it in court of law. I'd rather lower our risk as much as we can. And here's the thing that I heard today from our Health Director for the region, and I mean, it's great advice, is if there's low risk, medium risk, and high risk. If you choose to wear a mask at six feet, it's low risk.
Right.
Low risk for you. If you get closer to somebody within three feet, it's a medium risk. If you get within three feet of somebody, it's a high risk. So the thing in that is proximity. If you are within somebody cumulative, and I know way too much about this now, but if you are within 50, within six feet of somebody who is contagious for cumulative 15 minutes over the course of a day, you are more than likely going to test positive. You are extremely high risk. Because you're extending this close to me, I'm trying to say away, but she's at the most risk of all of you because she's closer to me, and I can't very well talk with a mask on.
So, once again, did the governor say teachers pass to wear a mask?
He has said it's up to local school. Everything at this point has been pushed back to the school board, but that is their guidance, yes, sir.
Okay.
That's what's in the 136-page document. That is guidance, but at the end of the day, it's up to you.
So none of that 136 pages is mandated for me?
No, sir.
Good, let's get clear here.
But understand, that guidance gives you legal protection and risk management.
I understand completely.
My job is to give you all advice.
Right.
His job is to give you all legal advice. And then from there, you all get to make decisions. Tell us what to do. Oh, did we also ask this question of this group? Did you respond to the Internet survey? Because we needed to find out. Do, how are we doing with this? Well, 88% says they can. So that's pretty reflective of the 83 that I said, so kind of tickled with that. Students only, I wanted you to see what the students said. Fifty-nine students responded. Now, I did a little bit different graphics on these, so you can see the difference. So governor's order, what factor? What do students want to do? Forty-one want to do a regular school day. Eighty-seven want to stay home. Or do something shorter, don't keep me in school. Preference type of school day? Forty-two want regular. Forty-two percent, 34 want a hybrid. One didn't respond to this one, I thought that was interesting. At 13, 22% want remote. If you recall back in one of those slides, about 20% were wanting to do remote only. That's reflective even in our children. I found that interesting. Now, is 59 students reflective of 3,200? No, that's a poor sample size, but at least you get an idea. And understand that surveys are that, it's whoever responds, and I understand that. And I think you all understand that you got to capture that against that. This is not everybody's opinion, it's just those that respond. How many are going to provide their own versus riding transportation? I'm not shocked by that, that's consistent. This one, if it was a regular day, for some reason, we had a lot of no responses. I think they checked out almost about halfway through the survey. It's only seven questions, but. And then shorter day a week, 51 had no responses out of 59. So you can say they checked out through the survey. But then they responded here, and you responded 83/17, and that's reflective of what was in the other surveys. We've had a pretty good response rate on the survey. So as far as reopening recommendations, based on all the guidance, based on the feedback, based on survey, based on what we think at this point, this is what we're recommending. We would suggest that at this point, that any phase that we're in be consistent with whatever the governor's got. So what we set up here is K7 and a Phase 3, attend in person, Monday through Thursday, which Friday, remote learning. Every day, every day, every day, Monday through Thursday. And we'll talk about, the thing that we don't have in here is the time that we would start and end. So that's something we haven't got. I've got two recommendations, but I want to talk to you all as a board and see what you all want to do. Phase 2, if we go back to that, that's where we would split the classes and do Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday, shorten the classes, reduce the class size, increase social distancing, and get added that way. Now, the reason, in the next slide, you'll see in high school, grades 8-12, we're recommending Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday. We're recommending a hybrid system out of the gate. Now, why are we recommending that? Basically threefold. First of all is transportation. To make sure that we can handle K7, high school students, if we're reducing the number of students on the bus, that will help. And some high school students can drive, some parents may bring them. So transportation's the first thing. Second thing is instruction. We feel like at some point, if this thing continues, as has been in history, we feel like at some point, we may end up going back to a Phase 2 or a Phase 1. And we feel like if our teachers and students are already three days a week doing some kind of remote learning, it's going to be easier to transition than when this happened in March. In March, we were not in position to do that, and we hadn't practiced it. We feel like if we go August 6th, and we can get a couple of months of remote learning in, and we work out the kinks of it, it's not going to be perfect. I mean, there's going to be hiccups, and there's going to be problems, and there's going to be challenges, but there's going to be a lot of opportunities, too, and we'll work through that. But that's why we're recommending that. And then the third piece of that is K7, what we're going to do, and I know what you think. Well, 25 students in a class, what's it matter whether they're seventh grade or eighth grade? Well, here's the difference. K7, we can keep 25 students together all day when they're there. We can feed them lunch, we can feed them breakfast in the classroom, and they don't switch classes. The problem in high school is that same 25 students that's in first block, it's going to be a different 25 students second, different 25 students third. So the smaller class sizes we can get, the less likely, if we get a positive case at the high school, that we have to shut the whole high school down. If we do staggered Monday, Wednesday, and we get a positive case, then we've only got to shut down the group that that impacted, because there's so much transference across, I mean, you see a lot of people. So that's where having 900 people in this building, Monday through Thursday, we feel like would be not the best thing. That's why we're recommending, let's go 450, Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday. Now, is it going to be exactly that way? No, it won't be exactly 450, but you get my point. I mean, we're going to figure out. We've looked at schedules, and we can get it down to almost 50/50, it's like 55/45. So.
The K7s, they're going to be on buses together.
Yes, sir.
They're going to be on the buses with high school students, right?
Yes, sir.
So they'll be in the classroom and going to lunch separately, and other people don't necessarily take care of the issue, or how many lunch periods are we going to have? We only have a couple, or we have a team?
We're working through that. But see, if we serve lunches in K7 in the classrooms, and even if we serve lunches at high school, we know, we know what group that was. And even if there are, let's say, you know, a positive case, and that class of 25 impacts two buses, then we can limit that, as opposed to if we had everybody, then it's going to be more far-reaching. And that's just, that's our opinion, but of course, you as a board, this is what we're recommending. If you want to go Monday through Friday, everybody, we can do that. If you want to do some variation of this, that's why this is a presentation. This is not a, this is not telling you what to do. This is showing you what we feel like is the best option.
So one of the reasons for 8 through 12 going back on a staggered basis is can have some virtual learning involved with that. You said, because if we end up going back to Phase 2 or Phase 1, that gives them an idea of how to do remote learning, I guess?
Yes, sir.
Okay, how does that help us with K through 7?
Well, on your buses, this time of year, probably for the next two, three, four months, you're going to have one with the stand. And that's going to help circulate the air. And actually, even in the winter, I've had to make them, put them up. But if you dress right, you can, you can have windows down quite a bit. And students love jerking those windows down, especially small ones. First thing they do, they get on that bus and jerk the windows down.
Mr. Hines answered your question. With 8, 12 being tied to credit, rewarding, you know, students completing credits, and also tied to graduation, that's why we feel like that's more of a point of emphasis. But how would we do that K7? We will be doing remote learning on Fridays. If we go back to Phase 2, that's when we would suggest that we go K7, Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday, and we go back to smaller class sizes to address social distancing. So I don't think we would, and I'm not a public health expert, but I don't think we'll go from Phase 3 to Phase 1. You'll go Phase 3, Phase 2, and then that would give our K7 teachers time to, hey, this is getting ready to get real if we're not real careful. So to go from one day a week to three days a week remote, they can adjust and adapt from one day to three days. And then if we go Phase 1 and we're remote learning everything, then they will adapt it to that. Now, I can't tell you we won't go Phase 3 to Phase 1. I mean, if you'd have told me we were shutting down schools in mid-March, I'd have told you we're probably not right. That answered your question?
Thanks, sir.
Okay.
I've got more of those.
You're going to be, go through this, or you're going to be, okay. Because hopefully I'll answer them as I go through. So here's a general summary. Oh, wait, let me go back, I mean, say something here. Down at the bottom in our document, families and their students may choose to do all remote learning. You learn at home every day, fine, we will take care of it. Because if you've got somebody medically fragile, you've got a family member, and you don't want to subject them to that, we'll work with you. That's what we're here for. We're going to work through this in a 21st century model that really has given us an opportunity to do something a little bit different than what we've ever done, which in my opinion, is a good thing. Will it work for everybody? Absolutely not. I've had a conversation with several people that, you know, remote learning in high school probably wouldn't have worked, you know, for a variety of reasons. But there were some people that I was in class with, that with or without the teacher, and even as a teacher, there were students that with or without me were going to get it. And those students will be able to work with those families and teach them remotely. So that's the upside of this. So they choose all remote learning. And as recommended, if a family today decides, I'm sending my child to school, whatever we, whatever you all decide, Monday through Thursday, Monday, Wednesday, I'm sending my child to school, whatever they recommend, I'm going to support them. Last week, most people, I think, would have done that. You know, we had nine positive cases, we had a positive case in Hatlong, we didn't have any active cases. This week, we got 15 and six active cases in the county. Last week, I may have decided, I'm going to send my child to school every day. Next week, I may decide, I want to do more remote learning, maybe send them just two days, you know? We will accommodate that. So we've got a section in here about attendance, too. At least three feet social distance in classrooms, 10 feet geomagnetic course, and this plays into activities. The guidance from the CDC at this point is that if you are exerting yourself, whether you're speaking, or whether you're yelling, is one example they use. If you're sweating, exercising, playing basketball, football, anything, if you're exerting yourself, you breathe heavier. So it's 10 feet versus six feet instead of just three feet. So that's why we're following CDC guidance on that. Breakfast and lunch served in classrooms, variances may apply as requested. We've already got a request, actually, from Lehigh to do, to access the cafeteria differently. So we submitted our plan to the local health department, and I think she might listen to us on this, that we bring them in one way, we do single file, they've got a very good plan with that. So principals have done an incredible job, and board members were thanking me. This is communication committees, this is feedback from, and communication committees for parents, students, staff, support staff, and teachers. We've had feedback from them. We've had feedback from county administration. I mean, this has been a lot of people, and principals especially. We've been meeting with them about every other week since March to talk about, hey, what's going on? What are you doing? We need to get ready for summer school, how are we going to do this? Instructional gaps. So they've been incredible, and I think as we get this up and running, leadership from our principals as well as from our teachers is going to be just monumental in getting us through this. So hats off to them, they've done a great job. Riding a bus will require the use of a face covering and allow one student proceed unless students live in the same household. Now, the face covering is unless there's a medical condition, we identified that in the draft, but we don't, I didn't put that up here on the PowerPoint. Families attend multiple schools, if you've got a child in elementary, middle and high, we're going to do our best to start with the high school student schedule and then work backwards so that everybody attends on the same day, so you don't have some children in school on Monday, some on Tuesday, so it's simpler on families. And that gets into communication. To Mr. Kidwell's point, we were, staff will wear face coverings when closer to students than six feet. If I'm a teacher, it's hard to teach with a face covering on, but you know, once I go over to work with the student, then I need to put my face covering on to protect the student and protect me. And again, that's just recommendations from administration. You as a board decides, to decide things, we just make recommendations. Face shields and face coverings will be available. And students be encouraged to wear face coverings when they're closer than three feet. At this point, we're planning on providing four face coverings for every student and staff member. What we're doing is we're currently getting bids, even from local vendors, for all of our schools with the school logo and the school color, and we've collected all that information and we've got those orders already placed. We have orders coming for summer school, and Mr. Williams, I'll show you a picture of what we've got, but it's got the Lee County Public Schools logo on it that we'll have for summer school because that's going to be open to everybody, but we are going to provide those. And as needed, we'll of course need families to wash them, keep them clean and all that kind of stuff. All students will get a device, internet access away from local CPS sites being surveyed. We are working with county administration on increasing access. One of the things that Mr. Poe and I talked about the other day is increasing the broadband capacity at each one of our fire halls, possibly libraries, so that students, so that parents could drive to those, even the voting station in Olinger. There are several places that we're looking at with some of our voting precincts, could we put a drop in there, put a Wi-Fi signal so our parents could just drive to that location and access the internet if they're doing remote learning, if they don't have access at home. We're also working to try to figure out, how can we improve access at home? You know, what do we need to do to get that last mile? We've got some tremendous infrastructure in Lee County, we just don't have a lot of last mile. So, and last mile is the connection from the connection at the road to the connection to your house, that's what they usually call the last mile. Everyone's encouraged to self-screen, this is staff and students, and stay home if you're symptomatic. The thing about it is, so many people are positive or asymptomatic, you don't have any symptoms at all. So you know, it's, it's an amazing thing. Additional cleaning and sanitizing, staff members can tell work, this is one of the big things. Notice there are staff members who can tell work. If you're a teacher and you can tell work, because we can't tell the work our custodians, I mean, you can't sit at home and clean a classroom. You can't tell work if you're a bus driver. But teachers, if they feel that their immune system is compromised, they can teach from home, students in the classroom, and we will hire a teacher assistant to, a paraprofessional Sumpa, to sit in the classroom and monitor the class, so the teacher can teach from home. I mean, we will accommodate that on an as-needed basis. And students are at high risk, not expected to attend. But you'll notice there, expect everybody to participate. We need everybody pulling in the same direction to get this thing addressed and make sure students are learning. Staff member tests positive, we may have to close down the school. Now, the thing that we, we've been talking to the health department about, we may not have to close down a school, we just may have to self-quarantine that class of 25 and the bus that they rode on. So that's where some of this cohorting is the big phrase. The fewer, the fewer changes that we can make, the better off we are. Class changes, or we've run hubs for our transportation system for years. Hubs are gone, we can't have six buses with 25 students pull up with 150 students and all of them switch six buses, and now all of a sudden we've got 150 students plus whatever that are now quarantined for 14 days. So we're going to pick up a child at home and deliver them to school and then take them back home. Now, does that mean we're going to have to add bus routes? Possibly. We're going to have to hire bus drivers? Possibly. We're going to run more miles on our buses? Possibly. Is it the best thing that we can do for our community with public health? Yes, in my opinion, and backed up by data. So much of this, we've got, in my opinion, we've got to look at data and make decisions as opposed to, but I personally believe, you know, that we should do because, you know, we can all take different approaches and stuff. We're going to teach families about, I'm going to read them to you, but staying home when sick, encouraging physical and social distancing, we're going to do professional development extra time for teachers. One of the things that's not in here again, is how long the school day should be. Richmond has indicated that they are willing to take a hard look at 990, at 990 hours, if we can meet certain things. So we are, we have talked about administratively, instead of a seven-hour school day, possibly going to a six-hour, 8:30 to 2:30. Now, why would we want to do that? Well, I think this is going to be a challenge for our teachers, not because our teachers are not good, we have some excellent teachers, but this is going to be new for all of us. So there's a side of me that, I've talked to staff and we've been kind of going back and forth conversationally, but I would lean towards an 8:30 to two, for everybody. 8:30 to two, five and a half hours, let's file for variance with the Department of Education. And then that means our teachers are under contract for seven hours a day. If they're under contract for seven hours a day and we have the school day five and a half hours, then they've got an hour and a half to get there before school to screen students and to have conversations and deal with remote learning. They've got an hour at the end of the day that they could do remote learning, touch base with students who haven't been there, and then they'll have Friday, whether they work in the school or at home, but they can pull office hours. You know, if they're in Kalamazoo, Michigan, they still can pull office hours in Lee County and be available to our students remotely. So that is one of the reasons why we're really feel like with high school that we want to try to do three days a week with remote learning, to try to get used to it. Now, there will be exceptions to this, I think I've got this in the next slide. One of the things with high school is with career and technical, we're going to propose, in the proposal that you've seen with the document, is career and technical classes over at Career Center, is if you're taking a class over there, you can attend your block every day, as long as we can social distance and everything's okay. If you've got 15 to 20 students and 10 are in the classroom and 10 are in the workshop, fine, do that. Bring them in every day, but you may only do academic on Monday, Wednesday, whatever your cycle is, but Monday through Thursday, you can attend career tech and we'll provide transportation, we'll work through that. Because students can't learn how to cut a piece of wood or weld something together or change a spark plug sitting at home on a computer. So that's one of the things we're proposing. Along the same lines, we have some students who have special needs, whether it be speech services or other things, but there may be some students who come four days a week that are on a Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday cycle because they have needs that we need to meet. So in my opinion, it's about providing equity, not evil. So we'll, we'll work through that individually, but that's one of the things we've got in here. The other thing is childcare, we will provide on Fridays as proposed, to essential businesses as defined by the governor's order. Now, schools are essential businesses, yes. Or are you implying, are you providing childcare for your staff? Yes, you are. But we also could provide it for nurses and doctors and other essential businesses that we could provide that childcare on Fridays for six hours. Our paraprofessionals would already be there, some of our teachers would already be there because there are some physicians can tell work, some physicians can't. So we would work through that, but we would like to provide childcare. And then the last thing that's in the plan, just so you know from an action standpoint, if you approve this plan, we've got this in here, that it will supersede and resolve any conflicts with the existing school board policy. So if we say attendance is, the two examples we give is if a computer, if a child logs into a computer, completes an assignment, they are present for the day. If a child doesn't have access to the internet but they log into a computer, it logs that activity, they connect to our network, it logs it, you're present for the day. If a child doesn't have access to the internet and they have a paper packet, here's where it gets real, they have a paper packet, they date it, they sign it, I did this work today, they're present for the day. It's about as fair as we can be, but it's stretching every boundary I've ever had as an educator, but I think it provides equitable opportunities for our children. So that's where by adopting this, this plan, that would be different than the compulsory education law and current existing school board policy because you have defined for the 2021 school year or something, it's a little bit different. So that wraps it up for me. Hopefully, between the newspaper and the TV, this will get out. We already have contacted JHL, CYB, Kingsport Times News to let them know, I anticipate somebody being here Wednesday from one, if not all of those entities. I plan on providing this PowerPoint to all of them and making it available on board docs after this meeting, but I wanted you to see it first. So any other questions? A lot of stuff I'm sure we do.
Even though I, though I'm instantly picking on you, I'm really not. I have had questions, community questions I've had in my mind, so I just want to ask through a little real quickly. If you do the childcare thing, can you invite in children of essential employees that maybe aren't even in the school system? Aren't you introducing an additional group of people that could be contaminating our schools?
Possibly, but there again, if you choose to access that, you've got to understand that we will clean the schools, we'll take care of it, we're going to provide the safest opportunity we can. But is there a possibility of cross-contamination? Yes, sir.
Okay.
Because the thing about it, and I don't know how much you all know about contact tracing at this point, but if I test positive tomorrow, they're going to backtrack everybody that was in six feet of me within the last 48 hours. So if you were in my circle within 48 hours, you're going to have self-quarantine. So, yes.
As far as safety supplies, you already mentioned 30 masks, PDEs, whatever, how about like Clorox wipes, thermometers? Are we going to have a lot of staff on each campus that can take children, employees, temperatures, not just one person at the door of Lee High?
I don't know if you saw the number of thermometers that we're ordering, but yes, they're, it's in the cares package, we've already got that earmarked.
Do you know how many it is? Don't look at it, don't know.
It's 50 that's in this room.
Okay.
So I mean, that's five per school and we're looking at even doing more with our, we've already ordered a bunch.
Okay. And you kind of mentioned, I think you answered part of this question, but specifically the duties and responsibilities of teachers on Friday when there's no school, did you address that?
As proposed, what we would suggest is the teachers have office hours. And what those office hours be is, you know, they can come into the school and work their six-hour day, because school board policy defines a teacher workday as six hours. So that six-hour day, they can come in and they can work in their classroom, they can be available to students. And again, they can do it in the classroom, or they can do it from their home, or they can do it from the beach with toes and sand. I mean, it doesn't matter to me as long as they're available to students. You know, and that's, that would be our suggestion, but at the end of the day, you all decide that. If you say if you want them in the schools on Fridays, then that's what it'll be. But as recommended, at this point, if teachers, as long as they pull office hours and they're available to students, I just don't want parents trying to get in touch with teachers on a Friday and, you know, couldn't get in touch with them, they didn't. And I understand some parents may say that, but they really didn't make an effort, we can document that too. But that would be what administration's recommending, to give our teachers some latitude in that because this is going to be different. I mean, it's going to be different and it's going to be hard different some days and this is going to be different, different other days.
Okay, I don't know if this is a question or comment, but in discussion with you, and I think I have this right, I ask you, I express you my concern about the virtual learning because you go to District Two in Blackwater, down below Cedar Hill, there's vast areas in my district that they don't have cell phone service, there's no internet access, even if you, you know, could have internet access in some areas, everybody can't afford the paper internet access. So you had an ideal about maybe going out to community centers, fire halls and providing some kind of access to that, correct?
Yes, sir.
And you think that's something we can get done?
Yeah, apparently quickly, yes, sir. Based on, based on what Mr. Poe, conversation he and I had during the last week. I'm going to the Board of Supervisors meeting on the 21st and I've been having some conversations with our new service provider, but the thing is, there's a fine line here. I've had a request, and Mr. Churchill and I talked about this, I've had a request for all the addresses of all the parents in our school division from a vendor. That can't go out, that is not the intent of this. We don't want a vendor contacting every household to say, hey, I'm going to try to sell you our service. That's not the intent of a directory information. So Mr. Churchill and I talked about that. But to that end, we can take that information and say, hey, listen, you know, Mr. Smith, you don't have access, internet access at home, but if you call this vendor, they can provide it for you. We can make that recommendation based on a survey response or a no response, so that we can maybe address that at their house on a quicker turnaround. But then also, again, great idea from the county on, let's just use what we've got as voting precincts, if not from fire halls, and if a parent lives close to that, which they would, they can just drive up to it, connect to the internet, probably the child connecting the internet, but connect to the internet, hit our network, download, upload, whatever, and then done, go back home. We've also looked at, one of the things we've got in here is school bus mesh access points. What this would be is basically a repeater that would be on each bus, that would be on, somewhere on the bus, that we could run bus routes on Fridays. And your bus is going to run two hours later, so you don't have to get up as early, but your bus route's going to run two hours later than usual, and he'll, bus pulls up, children come out, they're close enough to the bus, and then they download from the bus, and download, upload, and then it goes wherever it goes, and then the bus goes to the next stop. And we can do that also. So we've got several different plans in this that if you all decide the remote learning's the way we want to go, then we're going to put boots on the ground. If you all decide you want to go back five days a week, seven hours a day, then fine, we don't have to invest as much in this. So a lot of the decisions that will be made in the next week, next Wednesday specifically, will drive a lot of what we did.
I've got a couple more, and I'll be done.
Anything else?
Since I picked the mask battle. On buses, where we have that, and children, and masks on the bus.
We're recommending masks on buses because there again, if you're within three feet of somebody, you are at high risk when you're in an enclosed environment like that, you know, and at this point, it's, we recommend it unless there's a medical condition, you have to wear a mask on buses.
Well, there again, there's a difference in you have to and you're recommended. So where we at with it?
As framed right now, you ride a bus, you're wearing a face covering.
That's what's proposed.
Yes, sir.
What if a child has asthma?
Unless there's an underlying medical condition.
They wouldn't have it.
That's it, no, sir, no.
Okay.
But you got to understand, you ride a bus, you don't wear a mask, you go from low, very low.
Would they have the choice of a shield?
Team of the darners.
If they had the choice.
First grade of the darners.
No, it's going to be a big, big mess right there, but.
It will be, but.
Yeah, they'll be in a.
Is it going to be discipline related? No, we'll just contact the parents, say, hey, listen, you know, your child's not wearing a mask, a face covering on the bus. We're being careful with mask and face covering, just so you all know, so that way we don't end up, somebody coming in with a Freddy Krueger mask or something like that. So face covering is the phrase that's being used, so. But to that point, we would just work with the parents to make sure they understand, hey, we're recommending your child wear this and we really want them to wear it to protect your child and protect others by wearing the mask on the bus, but are we going to kick them off the bus? My recommendations, no.
Right, and you're going to get told that. So what we're going to say, my kids don't wear a mask, we've been told several times.
A quarter of them up there, parents that responded said no, you know, and another 22% said maybe, so.
And I don't have nothing against masks, obviously I know this virus is real, I'm not naive to that fact, but I think we're Americans, we should be able to decide what our kid has to do when it comes to something on their face. That's my opinion, but everybody's got theirs. As far as teachers, obviously, some of them will, I mean, they want to wear a mask, protect themselves and others, and I get that, I do. I don't have a problem with that, don't have a problem with four days a week. I'll have a problem with that, don't have a problem with four days a week. Only problem I have with the whole deal is, talk a little bit about getting off at 2:00 in the day, it kills people, that does not work in the school system, that both parents work. As far as childcare, like you've touched on already, some of it. It's going to be tough on working folks.
And if that's something as a board that you want to do, is after hours, we want to provide some kind of childcare from 2:00 on, then we can do that with other staff and possibly look at some kind of additional compensation, but that would at least free up our teachers to do some additional instructional planning and modification of plans to be able to address some different needs. But, I mean, if we want to provide childcare from 2:00 to 5:00 at all the schools and staff that were the paraprofessional like we're going to do on a Friday, and pay a little bit extra, again, we've got some money and cares and possibly Heroes Act that's coming, but that's, who knows? But we've got this, so, you know, that gets us through at least this year, at least through the next six to seven months. So, we can do that if that's what you want to explore and offer to the community, I think that's a great idea.
We know this is going to be a huge challenge, but even in normal school times, there's challenges out there.
Yes, sir. And opportunities. And opportunities.
Yes.
But there again, everybody don't work for the school system either. But I've had this conversation with Mr. Graham, he wanted to open house at 5:00. I said myself, I can't be there. I work, I don't get home until 5:00, 5:30 sometimes, my wife don't get up. My kids are driving now, don't have to worry about as much, but if they was in the third grade, thank the Lord my mom and dad live next door, is all I can say. And I feel for these people, because it's going to be tough on everybody, and obviously can't fix it for everybody. That part I do understand, but I can't bring myself to make me vote, make myself vote for a second grader to wear a mask. That's just where I'm at.
Other than buses, that's not what the proposal is. Unless they're within three feet, we're going to, and understand, at this point, unless you guide me otherwise, we're not planning on putting discipline tied to not wearing a mask for a second grader. We're just going to talk to the parents, talk to the child, they listen, you know, and if they choose not to, I'm not picking that battle unless you tell me you want me to.
Right, that's, that's my only.
I mean, that's where I am with it, unless you, and again, unless you, if you guide me and you're saying you want that hard and fast, and again, three of you vote, that's the majority.
If you're that young, it would traumatize them.
That's what we talked about, and I'll tell you, me personally, I didn't realize how much I read lips until people started wearing masks. I can look you in the eye, but I still read your lips, I mean, that's just what I do. But, you know, and we've talked about that from a teacher's vantage point, that, you know, students may do the same thing, and if a teacher's wearing a mask, that's going to bother some of them, so that's why we're going to offer face shields, and so, we're going to accommodate whatever the need of those instructors are to meet the students' needs. And it may change.
One more thing, I've been asked several times, you all want to bring everybody back so you can get paid. You get paid by, it's good, if they're not there, you're not getting paid, you know, but. So, where we at budget-wise with this many percent kids not in the system, they're remote learning or from home? Does that affect our budget? Does it affect our attendance? Obviously, it does.
No, sir, not at this point. It won't affect our budget unless some, and we've had several people contact us about homeschooling, and, but I've also had homeschool parents contact us and say, hey, listen, if my child doesn't have to attend public school, but we can access your programming, we may look enroll with you. That 20%, so, at this point, I can't tell you what membership's going to be on August 6th. And that's why I'm telling you as a board, and especially the finance committee, is we hold every, and this isn't a typical year, during the summer, we hold off on as much as we can until we see with that August 6th number. Once we get that number, then that can, we can either take a deep breath, or we're like, ooh, sound some alarms, we got to start, start pinching pennies now.
My question though is, that holding your breath for that number, is it going to be affected by the number of people staying at home?
No, sir. Not, not at this point.
Unless they're completely homeschooling.
If they remote learn, if they remote, if they have one of our devices and they're remote learning and they log in, they count as attendance, they're on membership, which counts as funding. If they choose, they, they make a request, which you've got later, if you make, if the parent makes a request that they want to be exempt from public education and they want to homeschool, then yes, we lose funding for that, because they do not have a school board issued device, LCPS issued device. If they have a school board issued device, they are a student and they count and head count, whether they're remote learning or whether they're coming full-time. And from a budget standpoint, we ended the year really tight, not as tight as we've been on the cash side in a number of years, and that's because we had about $160,000 drop in revenue from April through June. I mean, it, the bottom is falling out from the state side, so.
Any word from the state, our governor, whoever, about the extra transportation costs? We don't get any help there.
So, cares is balancing. This will get us through a year. That's the intent, this will get us through a year. That's what we've got in our plan. Now, after it, this goes another year, then, I don't know what to do.
And I'll touch on schools, and I thought you was going to ask me this, but if, if VHSL decides no falls schools, can we, as Lee County and this region and other schools still have a plan to skip?
There is a possibility.
I'd come seek VHSL.
There is a possibility of that. We've had conversations regionally about, and VHSL, we've talked to them about, the big thing about VHSL is they were a state champion, and then they also help us with catastrophic health insurance. If somebody breaks a leg and does something catastrophic, they help us with that insurance coverage. Regionally and you as a board, we can probably get catastrophic insurance through Baycor, which is our insurance provider, that would provide those opportunities. So, yes, sir, if VHSL pulls the plug and you as a board want to explore that, I'll be glad to carry that flag.
Thank you.
Any other questions? The next agenda item is talking about the calendar, and if that is adapted or presented, proposed, to basically account for the changes if we were to go away from a Friday. This is changing Fridays that we originally had off to Tuesdays and some Fridays to Mondays, and you can see they're moving progress reports from eight to nine. You can see, a lot of this ties into if we go Monday through Thursday. Optional teacher workdays changed from Fridays to Tuesdays, so that's what all that is, but it ties in with action that you may take next week, and of course, you take action next week, there are many changes proposed, so. Do you all have any initial feedback that you want us to work on between now and Wednesday, or you just want to wait and see what the public thinks about this? Any initial concerns?
Child care thing, might talk about every time, concerned if it is a four-day thing versus five-day thing, the parents and stuff, you know. I know you said that maybe we get the teachers to stay over and help, make sure of, at each hour or whatever, do the short day now. But then, why about the folks that ride the bus, the kids that ride the bus? You know, you then took the 2:00 kids home, and you got the 3:00 kids.
That's why I like the seven-hour day, it's more formal, yeah.
Well, if we did childcare, the thing that we could do, Mr. Williams, is if we offered childcare from 2:00 to 4:00, 2:00 to 5:00, then you would be expected to pick your child up at the end of your shift on your way home. You know, because you talk about a working parent who's coming home, and maybe they get off at 3:30 that day, fine, pick up your child at 3:30, or you're working overtime, so pick them up at 5:00. I mean, we could make that work if you want us to explore that.
Got a question I'd ask you, has there been any consideration given to, given the circumstances and only going potentially two days a week, instead of sticking with block scheduling for this school year, going back to the way it was, six classes, seven classes a day, getting more classes in each day?
We looked at that, but we've got so many graduates that are tied to eight credits, you know, the four in the fall, four in the spring. Yes, we did discuss that internally, did we put a lot of legwork into that? No, sir, we haven't, but if you want us to do that, we can, but going from eight credits down to seven, we looked at it, we're afraid it would impact some students adversely, so.
I just, I was wondering, because I thought, you know, if we're going to be there less time, maybe, less time on different classes each day.
And spread it out over the whole year, run seven blocks, seven periods all year. And we even talked about, you know, could we do a A-B day, because basically, if we, as proposed, teachers are going to have to teach two days of content in an hour. You know, they're going to have to teach Monday, Tuesday content, and then say, children, you got to go home, you got to do some work, because you got to help me pull this sled. And then on Wednesday, they show back up, and then they got to gauge, okay, did you do what I asked you to do, or do we have to go back to the drawing board? So, you know, they got to do three hours of instruction in an hour. So, you know, this is going to be different. There's going to be a lot of responsibility on the students, a lot of responsibilities on families. It's going to take all of us working together to make this work in the interest of public health, and that's, you know, would it be easier to do that, you know, and go to eight blocks a day and do 30-minute classes for the whole year? We could do that, be kind of different, but I mean, it's, you know, again, we work at the will and pleasure of the board, but at this point, we recommend that the students have already got their schedule, they've gotten used to four classes, and if they've got four classes and then they change in December to another four classes, we just feel like that that would be, if this goes to beyond phase three, then we come back five days a week, pick up right where we left off, because we've already got the schedule we've been living. So, we're glass more than half full on, hopefully, we get beyond phase three at some point, and we can get back to four days a week, five days a week. If you as a board decide that, even if we do go back normal, that you want to go back to a seven-hour, four-day week, and then we remote learn on Friday from here on, we can do that too.
I'll just tell you, we get back, we will eventually, I do want to consider going four days a week. Everybody have a Friday off.
And I know there's concern about Fridays, you know, that's why we put out Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday off, Thursday, Friday. The thing about Fridays off as proposed is, first of all, with survey results, second of all, it gives us 72 hours that a building sits empty. This stuff will survive on surfaces for 72 hours, whether we clean it or not, if we do that. So, it gives us time. Time is on our side with cleaning. Now, we will clean, we will set those expectations. Do I legitimately think every surface is going to be wiped 100% every day? I'd like to think so, but realistically, no. But that 72 hours gives it that time. That will be our expectation, don't get me wrong, but, you know, is it going to be done?
No.
But the thing about Fridays also, and I've talked to the previous board about this, we have a tendency to be a take Friday off community anyhow. I mean, our, our former bus drivers, you probably know this, watch ridership and the attendance, we'll be mid-90s on Monday, Tuesday, we hit 94, 93 as a division, you know, Wednesday, Thursday, and then we'll go down to mid-80s on Friday. Every week, we take a 10-point hit on Friday, because we take Fridays off, so it plays to what our community does anyhow, so. All right, so any other questions? All right, that wraps it up for me. Thank you.
Close session.
I'll make a motion if we go into closed session.
Do you mean the chairman? I'll speak to this if I'm right.